So I'd like to call the February 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Easton Metal Planning Board to order. I'm required by Master General Law to indicate that this meeting is being recorded by LCAT. And I need to know if there's anyone else in the audience who might be recording this meeting? And if so, would you please hit your raise hand button on the Zoom call you brought into the meeting and then identify yourself? Hearing none.
Don't see anybody, nope.
Okay, hearing none. So those in attendance are Tide Richards, John Torscha, George Kingston, myself, Russell Denver, Community Development Planning Director Bethany Yao, and Rebecca Jones from the Office of Planning and Development. So first item of business is to approval of our last meeting minutes. I hope people have had an opportunity to review them. Do I hear a motion to accept or are there any additions or corrections?
I've moved to accept.
George second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Mr. Clerk, first item of business, please.
We have a site plan waiver, SPRW 2021-03, request for a site plan review waiver for Perron's Automotive, Inc., an automotive repair business at 209 Shaker Road. Assessors parcel ID 18-8-4, an existing structure on Point 33 plus or minus acre site in the industrial zoning district. The applicant is Brian Perron, 197 Shaker Road, Easton Metal, Mass.
Is Mr. Perron in the meeting and be brought forward?
I have Elise Perron, I guess that's her. Hang on.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you this evening?
Welcome to our Zoom world.
Yeah, this is a first, so.
We're old hats. I think we've been doing it now 10 months, so.
10 more months than I've done it, so.
So tell us what your question from the board tonight, a little bit about, you know, what you have in mind.
Okay, so I own Perron's Automotive in Easton Meadow at 197 Shaker Road. I've been in business almost 12 years and I'd like to take over the 209 Shaker Road as an additional building. It was originally an automotive shop. It's been that for, I believe, almost 20 years. So basically, I'm not changing anything. I'm going to do the exact same thing he was doing in there, working on, you know, vehicles and et cetera.
So are you going to have two buildings operating?
Yes, I am. Yep.
So is that, has Bob Powell joined you yet?
Well, he's supposed to, yes, but I'm waiting for an approval from you guys to go forth with what I need to go with. Yes.
Okay, all right. Any members of the board have any questions of the petitioner?
Just, is that the one that was at Abtuch?
It was at DMZix, yes.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the waiver.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
So motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. You're all set, ready to go.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything. I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Take care. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Next item of business, Mr. Clerk.
SPRW 2021-04, request for site plan review waiver for the construction of a concrete ramp with a roof to the sub-ground level of an existing facility at 43 Chestnut Street, Assessors Parcel ID 407-0, on a 2.8 plus or minus acre site residential A zoning district. The applicant is Masonic Temple of Easton Meadow, 43 Chestnut Street, Easton Meadow.
Mr. Pelletier, are you representing the petitioner?
Yes, I am. A.J. Rafi is here as well.
So tell us what you're planning on doing to the building.
Well, to the exterior of the building, we're basically, we're going to be doing a little bit of excavation and pouring of a concrete ramp for handicap access. And there'll be a roof structure, a wood truss roof structure, that will go over it to protect against rain. And then the rest of it's just an interior renovation of bathrooms.
Will it be visible from Chestnut Street?
I believe it'll be partially visible, but the majority of it will be behind the building. I'd say maybe a third of it will be visible from Chestnut Street.
Mr. Roth, do you want to add anything?
No, not at this time. It's just, again, we are trying to make our building more accessible to people with handicap challenges. So that is one of the purposes, both members and non-members.
I'll open it up to the board. Any board members have any questions of the petitioners? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience, Mr. Mackey?
Nope.
Okay. So hearing no further questions. Do I hear a motion to approve the waiver?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
Second that one.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care. Bye bye.
Thanks, Ryan.
Next item.
Okay, we have other business. Request for release of bond for Rustic Meadows subdivision in Rustic Meadows Lot 1 Silver Lane Fox, Silver Fox Lane. Applicant is CNN Builders LLC, 31 Hillcrest Circle, Westfield, Mass.
So I see a name. It says Carmine, but I'm sure it's Carmine Capua. So we can't see you and you're muted. So if you're new to Zoom, the bottom left of your screen, you'll see a little camera. If you hit that, it will pop up your video. Just to the left, to the left of that is also a little microphone and you might want to unmute that.
While waiting for that, the clerk might want to read in the letter from DPW.
So I have a letter addressed to Mr. Russell Denver, Chairman of the Easton Meadow Planning Board, regarding the bond release for Silver Fox Lane. Dear Mr. Denver, the Easton Meadow Department of Public Works has performed a final inspection and review of the as-built plan for Silver Fox Lane. We will stipulate that subdivision was built in conformance with the approved plan, subdivision rules and regulations, and constructed to DPW standards. It is our recommendation to release the remaining bond with the exception of the 20% allowed to be retained by Section 5.4.4 of the subdivision rules and regulations. This retained should be held until the town accepts the street, at which time the bond should be released in full. Please let me know if you have any further questions. Respectfully yours, Thomas D. Christensen, Deputy Superintendent of Department of Public Works.
So I had a discussion with Bethany about this item earlier. Bethany, do you want to add a little to this, please?
Sure. So essentially, what happened is this is the first street acceptance request the town has gotten since the new form of government, which means that we do not have a clear process on how it should go about. So what we've done is got in contact with town council. The procedure will be on the next town council meeting, which is February 9th. So they will iron out the details on how that should work. And then DPW and the planning board will know what role they play in that process.
Hello, now we see you. But you're still muted.
Still muted, Carmine.
So to the bottom left, you'll see a microphone.
You see that? Yes.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
There we go.
We can see you and hear you.
It's always a first for everything.
Yeah. Were you able to hear Bethany's description of the need for town council to advise the elected town council on how this process should move forward for the acceptance of the public way?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So do you want to add anything to that? And I was thinking with Bethany, and I think George will appreciate this as well. So under the prior form of government, the only way, I believe, that the public way was accepted by the town was at town meeting. And now you have a town council who really is acting in place of town meeting. But they meet, obviously, much more often than we had town meetings in this town. Because normally, we would have a spring town meeting and a fall town meeting. So actually, this might be expedited faster through the new form of government than the previous form of government.
It's my understanding from Bethany that the request is to release 80% of the total bond right now and all 20% until the town council meet, and then release the additional 20%. Am I correct?
Yes.
Obviously, it's not what I anticipated, but I understand, you know, there's a new process in place and, you know, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great. Any questions of the petitioner, the developer?
Just make a comment here, Russ. I think you're absolutely right in that what town council, what it did now devolves on town council to do. So I would make a motion to release 80% of the bond.
And just for clarification and for the record, the total amount is $79,743.78. And 80% of that is $63,795.2.
Also, Bethany, there is an additional bond for the Lot 1.
Right, I can bind that in.
I combined those two. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, George has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, to release 80% of the bond. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So Bethany, next steps with Carmine?
Basically, we just wait until the next meeting with the town council, which is next week. DPW will be in attendance, as will I, so we can all be on the same page moving forward.
And the 80% at this point will be released, uh, quick. When?
I'll get the memo to our collector's office. So once it gets in their hands, I think it's a week or so, depending on the timing.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Yeah, bye bye.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next, we have a discussion of a collaboration with LCAT for planning video series.
So Mr. Mackey, do you want to join us?
Sure.
So I approached Bethany and Mary McNally, who I guess then also brought in Don, just to maybe do a series of either shows or PSAs about the planning board, about zoning violations, about what is legal and not legal, just in a way that we are more proactive in the approach on these type of items. So I thought we'd bring this to the board. I don't know if you want to do like three-minute PSAs or a 30-minute with the building inspector, or, you know, how a zone change happens, how a special permit happens, just so that we can do a little more education to the public. So I just wanted to get everyone's thoughts on those type of things.
Well, I think it sounds like a great idea because a lot of people are not clear on what you need to do to start a business or to make changes to a site, et cetera, et cetera. And I think it'd be a great idea to put it out there so people can get some idea of what they need to do.
And regarding topics, George, are there others that you might think of would be appropriate?
Well, certainly, starting a business, changing a site plan, those are the two basics. Doing a subdivision, doing, excuse me, what an A and R is all about, which a lot of people, to me, took a long time to figure it out. Those kinds of things, I think, would be great. Also, as you point out, zoning violations, how to handle them. If somebody thinks that they see a violation, what should they do? Who should they report it to? And what information do they need to report to make it easier for the building inspector to investigate?
And I've asked kind of Bethany to work with Kevin to develop the top 10 zoning violations in town. And I'd like to do, I'd like to do something that would show what is a violation, what's not a violation. And at least then, when someone might be cited, they would not be able to say that the town did not make people aware of what is or isn't out there, besides having to go to the zoning bylaws. I'm just trying to tamper down the "I didn't know that" type of thing, although it's not an excuse. So John or Tide, what are your thoughts on doing these type of programming?
I think it's great. I like everything that George said. And just to add to that, sometimes I think it's important to people to understand why there's a process. You know, oftentimes, I hear people say, "Well, why do I have to go through this? It seems like a lot of paperwork for nothing." And in addition, explaining how to do it, but why it's important that it's done properly, why zoning is important.
John?
Yeah, I would agree. I think zoning violations is important. Also, you know, I've, at least from a couple of short period of time I've been on this board, some people don't realize, you know, what a zone is. Or I remember one time we had a subdivision and somebody said, "I didn't realize they could build right next to my, or nearby my house." So I think it would be good to kind of inform people that, you know, as long as it's zoned in that proper way, anything under that zoning criteria can be built there. So that could be very informative. So people kind of know what our department does and what they do.
I've also asked Bethany, I try not to, I try not to ask too much of her, but I've asked her to also see if she can find other communities that might require their realtors who sell in their town to provide to prospective buyers things like what can be done on property, can't be done on properties. You know, the last, as John said, you know, there is a process to check the zoning next to your house and be able to see that, yes, someone could put a subdivision there, or no, they can't. Or it might have been this, but it can be changed. And whether you can have a commercial vehicle, not a commercial vehicle, those type of things. I just am looking a way to kind of take the "I never knew, I never knew, I never knew" out of the equation as much as possible, so.
I might add that we might want to do something about the difference between planning and conservation. Because they're both under Bethany, a lot of people don't realize that because there's a wetland, it doesn't mean you can't put a subdivision in. It means you have to engineer around it. And the two departments deal with different issues that sometimes get conflated with each other.
Great idea. You also oversee the ZBA, is that Bethany?
Yep.
So that's a great idea. It's kind of how the three of them all interact among each other as well. So I'm hearing general agreement that this is a project that we should be developing. We'll try to have Bethany and Don put some meat on maybe five or six different episodes that we could possibly do and bring them back to the board for a little more discussion before we were to kick something off. And then, of course, I would like to see if different members of the planning board would like to also participate on camera on some of these as well, so. All right. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
PVPC DLTA application discussion.
So as some of you know, the district local technical assistance is, or funding for this year is, or they're collecting applications until Friday, February 12th. They did move the date up a little bit. So I was wondering if there's any particular plans that you would like me to submit a request for?
So can you kind of refresh our memories on the DLTA? I know the last TA is technical assistance, but.
Sure. The district local technical assistance. Let me just pull up there.
Because the last, our last meeting, we discussed either North Main Street or Shaker Road for a district for a grant as well.
Right, so this is something separate. Last year, we used it to help get started on the housing chapter prior to receiving funding for the whole master plan. So I was thinking perhaps a good follow-up project would be working on a housing production plan, seeing as we're kind of in the midst of similar work and we don't have a housing production plan. But if there are any other ideas that you would prefer the funding go towards, I'm open.
So can you describe a housing production plan?
Sure. So it's basically the same information as a housing chapter. It's a little bit more in-depth. It goes over what Easton Meadow has, where we're trying to head towards to meet state regulations and needs. But it can also be used as a tool to prevent certain types of housing that the community doesn't want. Whereas a housing chapter can't do that. So it's a little bit more of an action-oriented plan.
So the first time I had heard of a housing production plan was it was raised at the town council during their discussion on the multi-use district, village district. So, yeah, you know, if you believe it's a valuable tool to have and help give the town some direction. You know, George, you're on the executive committee on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, right? Do you know, do you want to add to that?
I would agree. These plans, housing development plans and other plans are important documents to have for the town. And they're things that we haven't dealt into before. But they are great for directing, at least giving some direction of where the town is going and for showing that we're being proactive about housing needs. I think this would be a great, great application for DLTA. I mean, the funds are out there. We may as well get them. It doesn't commit us to anything. It simply says, this is, shows that we're thinking about where we want to go and how we want to get there without having somebody come in and force it on us.
Tide or John, any comments on this?
No.
Do you need a vote, Bethany, from this board to endorse you submitting a application?
Sure, that would be great.
Do I hear a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion to do so.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. I believe there's one more item.
Yes, we have a director's report.
Yes, so we did get awarded the local rapid recovery plan for the study area. I went with North Main Street, as George had pointed out, that has met the criteria that they were looking for, being all in the business zone. Whereas the downtown area was a mix of municipal, commercial, industrial zones. So that will be about a five-month project, a planning project. They've allowed it to extend beyond June 30th, 2021. We'll be matched with a consultant or regional planning agency who will facilitate the plan. And we will be getting one-on-one support specific to the subject matter, depending on the needs of our community. So I will keep you all informed. What I hope this plan will do is line up some funding avenues for the plan. So what I'm really hoping is that we can build off of this plan and some of the funding opportunities will be applicable elsewhere in the community. So when we get to that funding part, we can also apply for different areas in the community, not just that North Main Street area.
Anything else you want to add?
I'm working on a draft for amendment to the solar bylaw. I'm using the best practices solar guide that PVPC and a number of municipalities in the region worked on. I think I emailed that out a couple of months ago, but if you want, I can send it out again. I'm trying to get a draft finished by March so we can have a public hearing and you all can start reviewing it in a public setting.
And would you, once again, just for people who might be watching this now or watch it later, talk about the master plan session on February 12th?
Yep, it's actually February 13th.
13th, yep.
Which is a Saturday morning. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. until noon. I do have some posters I meant to put up yesterday, but with the snowstorm, I'll be putting them up tomorrow. There is a special website on PVPC's platform that's just for the master plan and it has all the supporting documentation. It has the links to the Zoom webinar for that visioning session. We also have it on the town webpage, but if anybody can't find it, you can just email me or call me. It's open to everybody and anybody, so youth, residents, seniors, everyone's welcome.
And would you do a favor and resend the link to the members on the planning board as well, please?
Sure, absolutely.
So upcoming meeting on the 16th for the agenda, upcoming items would include?
Right now, it's actually empty. We had the preliminary subdivision plan for South Bend on it, but there is a mix-up with the advertising. So that'll be pushed to the March meeting, unfortunately. So we have more time to review it, which is good, I guess. And I'll continue to forward the department heads' comments to you for review.
I had a chance just to go out and I drove it the other day and had some clarifications that I'm asking Bethany to look into. So if anyone else has some, when, as you begin your due diligence, you might want to send them along to her so she can get you some answers as well. All right. Any, no old business, any new business? Any comments from the board?
Quick question. Did we respond to the request for reconsideration on pampered debts?
Bethany?
Sure, we sent out a letter. I did speak with our town council, Jesse, about it. I just speak with uh, our town council, Jesse, about it. Um, he said that they may file an appeal. Um, and they will also be filing a new special permit as soon as possible. So I haven't seen any paperwork on that yet. I'd expect it to be scheduled to the March meeting, if not the April. Um, but I'll update you if and when that appeal comes in.
But yes, there was community, there was communication with the petitioner on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Torsha? Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, everybody. Take care. Bye bye.